And that is to be respected. Now traditionally, citizen concerns is to allow audience members to raise problems, make suggestions about topics that are not on the meeting agenda, but fall within the municipal government's purview and are matters that the board and/or the town manager can reasonably address. As these items are not on the agenda, the board can only acknowledge the comments, though for straightforward, practical issues, the town manager will often agree to address online. So going forward, comments during citizens' concerns should address only matters falling within the municipal government's purview and will be subject to a three-minute hard stop limit for all speakers. So with that, I'll begin to take public comments. Okay. Go ahead, please, call-in user.
Hi, it's Tara from Wetteck. Can you hear me?
Good evening. Yes, Tara.
Yes, hi, thanks. I have a concern about trying to do the special election for Jones Beach on March 30th, and I'm hoping that you'll let people speak then before you make your decision.
That's on the agenda. You'll be heard, and we cannot do it on March 30th.
Oh, you can't. Okay, so then I'll just take my comments offline to myself. Thank you so much.
Are there any other citizen comments? There's no other hands raised, John. Okay, that's very good. So we are at 7:03. Let's do consent items. So 12, committee appointment, Dr. Nathan Cookson, full member Planning Board. 13, request for refund, Building Division. 14, accept gift Recreation Department for $5,000 from Kathy Fochman to be used for constructing a dog park in Acton. 15, accept gift Recreation Department for $10 from Simone Bencher to be used for constructing a dog park in Acton. 16, accept gift Recreation Department for $70 from Colleen Carney to be used for constructing an Acton dog park. Do I have a motion to approve consent items 12 through 16 inclusive? No move. There are seconds. Second. Okay. David, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous, John.
Okay, that's very good. So we're now at 7:05. Let me do the chair's update. And I would just like to welcome, from the Acton Water District, its new liaison Barry Rosen, who's with us tonight. And Barry, would you introduce yourself and offer up some brief remarks, please?
Just a second. I'll let Barry talk. Just go ahead.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for providing some time for me to introduce myself to you and my additional role as the liaison to the Town of Acton Select Board. Currently, I still continue to serve on the Town's Water Resources Advisory Committee. And as you know, I'm one of the three elected, pardon me, members of the Acton Water District's Board of Commissioners. In this new role, or this additional role, I expect to work along with the Town's liaison to the Water District, Jim Snyder-Grant, to continue building the relationship, help foster communications and the understandings between the two organizations, which really do have a mutual interdependence upon each other. Jim and I, as some of you may know, are already working together. In 2021, the Water District adjusted its meeting schedule so that, with few exceptions, the two boards will meet on different Mondays, alternate Monday evenings, actually, which hopefully will make it easier for members of either board and the two liaisons to attend each other's board meetings if they choose to do so. As always, if there's any way in which I can assist the board or provide information to the board, please bring them to my attention, and I'll be glad to help. Thanks very much, guys and ladies.
Lady, lady, stay with us. So the balance of our, our next meeting is three weeks from tonight because of the President's Day holiday in two weeks. And then we'll meet again the following week. That's March 1, when John will be giving his budget presentation. So that would be it from me. We're at, I think it's 7:08 now. We have a hearing at 7:10. John, would you like to give your manager's update? And then we'll come, we'll have the hearing and come back to member minutes.
Great, yeah, thank you. I'm having some issues with my Wi-Fi, so if it continues, I'm going to turn my video off, so don't take it personally. I just, big news for me, for the organization, and for everyone. I would like to announce that we have hired Kristen Bishard to be our planning director and going enforcement officer. Kristen's worked with the town for almost 10 years, and she's done a terrific job progressively, working in different roles. And Rowan Barlow retired over the summer, as you all know, and she did a really nice job filling in for him on an interim basis. And after her recruitment, she's been selected to be our permanent planning director. So we're all excited for that, and I just wanted to mention it to the board. Other things, Kelly's Corner update. Kristen mentioned that we reached a milestone in the planning and design phase of it. We've been through the NIEPO process, which is a pretty big milestone, which I can give you more details on later. We, on the 22nd of this month, I look forward to talking to the board about a study that we just completed with the Town of Conker to look at the feasibility of combining dispatch with Conker and Acton. So stay tuned. I look forward to talking to the board and getting your input on that study and those results. Acton Station Project on Harris Street is coming along well. We've been about waiting. You may think it's a big deal, Rick. We are doing the drilling for the geothermal well, which is very exciting. It's actually going to take longer than I thought. It's going to be a month if they're out there. So we have a chance to see it if you drive by or walk by. I have a, I wanted to read an announcement about the election, the 2021 general municipal election today, March 30th. We are still in the window of time where the governor and the legislature allows for mail-in voting. So no excuse voting by mail has been extended until March 31st, and so it's available for all registered voters. Absentee voting is still available for residents as well. It must be submitted every year to the Town's clerk's office. To request a ballot, contact the Town's clerk's office. The voting will be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Later this month, the voter cycling will determine the location for the voting that will take place. If you recall, the last two elections, we consolidated to a single polling place at RJ Gray, and the board will discuss whether that's something that you want to do again for the March election. Controlling deadlines, Friday, February 5th is the last day to request nomination papers. Tuesday, February 9th, last day to submit nomination papers with qualified voter signatures. March 10th, last day to register to vote in the election, March 10th. March 24th is the last day to submit, you're no excuse absentee ballot. And March 30th is the election day. So all of them are on our website, but I wanted to just mention it because we haven't talked about it in a while. And two other quick things, annual reports, to those of you who are out there, those who are doing the research, January 31st. I look forward to all of these remarks in the history book. As you all know, the annual report is your chance to be published and to be, to tell people 100 years from now what we did in 2020. So you should have a lot to say, I would think. Piper Lane, we have provisionally applied for a building permit, a demo, a demo permit, rather. We're going to carry through the course of doing the RFP just to get the project on the historic district commission's timeline and give them the chance to weigh on it. We wanted to do that provisionally right now, so if you hear about that, that's what's going on. And finally, we were approved by the Baker Pluto Administration to receive technical assistance from the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, and we're going to be looking at wayfinding and some ways to help our businesses recover from this pandemic. So some quick updates. Look forward to talking to you about it more.
In the state's business grant program, I think it came in two or three phases. How many, how much money did Acton businesses receive?
Through the festival round, 17, I believe, 17 businesses over $800,000 in grants were given through Acton businesses from the state's program. I can email you the exact number, but it was over 8,000, over 800,000, and I think 17 businesses.
17 businesses go over $800,000? That's great. And the name of that program was?
It was the Baker Pluto Small Business Grant Program.
Thank you. So it's still after 7:13. If we could, if we could do our hearing, which should be brief, so we could move those gentlemen on, and then we'll come back to member minutes. So.
Excuse me, John, just point, point where are they? I don't see either of those people on currently, unless I'm missing them, and if someone wants to point them out to me.
Is one Ethan Robideau?
I don't see Ethan on, and I don't.
He's already been promoted to panelist. You're looking.
Yeah, I can see him. Oh, I see him. Fine, that's fine.
Okay, good, thank you. So notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of the general law is that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on February 1, 2020, at 7:10 PM remotely on a video conference and call in on the application of Overtime Bar and Grill for a change in manager from Justin Senkavow to Ethan Robideau for an all-alcohol license as a common particular at 30 Great Road, Acton. Due to the continued closure of Town Hall to the public, the hearing will be held online via Zoom. From a computer, please click on the link to join the public meeting, or from a telephone dial 6468-769923 and enter webinar ID 503918785. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. So John, would you like to lead on this? Or should we get Ethan?
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to have Ethan present his request or their request.
Okay.
Change of manager. Anything you would like to share with us?
Just that I've been working at Teamworks for the last eight to nine years now, and due to my hours at work, we feel it's appropriate for me to be the bar manager as I'm there during the normal general operations of the facility as well as the bar and grill at that time.
Are there any questions from board members?
What are the hours of operation?
Under normal circumstances, generally four to midnight. Right now, we're closed. We aren't going to be open anytime soon until COVID clears up. But under normal circumstances, we're open four to midnight.
Are there any other questions? David?
Yeah, so just to confirm, there's no change in ownership here, just a change in management. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions from board members? So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jim. Okay, any just further discussion? Okay, so if David would call the roll.
Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
So then, do I, would I have, do I have a motion for a change of manager for the Overtime Bar and Grill from Justin Senkabar to Ethan Romeo, Robideau for an all-alcohol license as a common particular at 30 Great Road, Acton, Massachusetts?
No move.
Okay, Joan, is there a second?
Second.
Second, David. Any further discussion? So David, if you'd please call the roll.
Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye.
Okay. Okay, so back to member minutes. Jim?
So last week, I announced the session that the EPA is holding. It's going to be this Wednesday night about future uses of the WR Grace site. I got some calls from people that noted that I did not, that I only visually showed the link and did not say it. So in the hopes of getting more people to know about this meeting, I'm going to say that this, the way to find out more about this meeting and to get the link to attend is at www.epa.gov/superfund, one word, slash graceacton. And for those of you that are participating by Zoom, that's also in the chat. And look forward to seeing you there at 7:00 PM to hear from the Grace Company and EPA about possible future use plans for that Superfund site in the South of Acton. A couple other things. I went to the Mass Municipal Association meeting in January. They had, so this is the association that includes an association for select boards and boards of selectmen, so I got to be, I got to learn stuff about how to be, how to be on a board, which was really, really helpful. And I just, I'll thank the town for, you know, being willing to pay for it. And also, I wanted to pass on some cool stuff I learned that might be worth discussion at a future meeting or maybe even be part of our goal-setting next year. Well, in July, when we typically set goals. And that would be about best practices for evaluating people that report to the Board of Selectmen. In our case, most importantly, our town manager. And there are, you know, now, now, an increasing body of knowledge and sharing about best practices. It would take a while for our HR department, for example, to take a look at those and discuss them with us. But I think it's worth looking at. We've been doing it the same way for a few years. And there are some frustrations about the limitations of that process. And I think, you know, now that John's been here for a couple of years and knows that we know and love the work he does, that this wouldn't be, this would not be any way of expressing some new upset at John. It's more an act of John's a new manager and has, you know, presumably has lots of room to get even better. So if we can get even better at figuring out how to give him important evaluative comments and have, I think that would be a good direction for the board to go. So if anybody wants to have this as a formal agenda item in the future, I'd encourage you to contact John and Joan to get it on the agenda. Or you might not, you may, you may not be surprised then to hear me mention it as a possible goal for a future year. The last thing is, just a short comment, since we've been kind of using the member minutes some to respond to all the comments we've been getting, both by email and in person. And so I think, John, you said it very well when you said that hearing these comments is part of, it's part of the democratic process, and there can be some, you know, harsh or critical comments that come in there about the board members. And then that's part of, you know, that's, that's probably what comes with being elected. And I just wanted to say that I am not going to participate in, you know, pointing blame or fingers at my fellow board members. If I think they've made mistakes, I will tell them. And I'll do that in public if I think that's important, or I'll do it in private if it's a small thing. But I just want to make sure that people understand that I don't, I think it's important that we not group ourselves into, you know, the good selectmen and the bad selectmen, which is part of the process that naturally happens on a political level in the larger conversation in the community. But for me, you know, you guys are the people that I'm working with to help run the town, to be the executive body. So I have no interest in, you know, categorizing us in one way or some way or another way. I just want to figure out the best way to work together to make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan?
No.
David?
Yeah, the school building project is making a very good project. The structural steel is beginning to arrive this week, so you'll see the building go up instead of out soon. It's probably about done going out, so most of the year I know is going to be up. The utilities are mostly going to be coming in the Arlington Street entrance, and so that entrance is now closed, and the bus is there for a while. I'm not sure exactly how long a while is. It's measured in months, I think, not years or something. We'll be coming in and out through Street, whereas that, you know, up until this week, they came in the Arlington Street entrance. So that's all.
Thank you, David. Dean?
Yeah, my only item is I attended a site walk of the Morrison Farm with a quorum of the members of the Agricultural Commission. It was a posted public meeting. And with, we had some other interested individuals. We did this on Saturday, and it was a nice walk on a very cold day. But I think the Agricultural Commission is pondering the possibility of looking, putting a conservation restriction on the property at some point. So this was just sort of a familiarization walk with the area. So a lot of good ideas got kicked around, and if nothing else, it was a great place to walk, and it was great to see how many interesting things are going on in that parcel right now. That's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, so if we could go to item for COVID-19 response updates, John, please.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot, a lot has been happening with vaccines over the last few weeks. We issued a newsflash today, just to give the latest information. Today, February 1st, is the day that people can start having appointments to get vaccination. There's been a lot of frustration expressed by those people that are eligible, 75 and over, as of today. And I think there was a lot of people that were trying to get appointments last week, and they were struggling. And our Council on Aging and our Acton Town Services hotline is available to help people. If you call during business hours tomorrow, we can have someone help you walk through some of those systems, if that's helpful to you. We've also sent out what we're calling a vaccine interest form, and we asked people that are in the eligibility realm right now, the 75-plus and the other people that are eligible right now in Phase 2, to start filling that out. And what that is, it's not a waiting list, it's not a order form. It's simply a way for you to register with our team that's working on vaccinations to make sure that when the people that fill that out are eligible, we will let you know directly. We do have various ways of getting in touch with people, but we want to make sure that, in this case, we have a direct line to people that are most in need of vaccines. And we expect that a lot of people will find through, whether it's the major dispense points of vaccination at Gillette and Fenway and the hospitals or through your primary care. We expect there'll be people who don't have access to those, and those are the people that we're focusing on right away initially. And we will continue to announce publicly any, any updates that we have. We're hoping to get vaccines and continue to distribute them to our residents. And our team is working very closely together with the Council on Aging, Nursing, and the Deputy Fire Chief, who's our emergency management director, and myself have been meeting every day and trying to sort this out along with the other folks involved who've been immersed in COVID response. So any questions on the vaccines? I know there's a lot of, a lot going on out there. Any questions for how we're handling it here?
You, you said we could call the Council of Aging. And what was the hotline people could call?
So the Acton Town Services hotline is 978-929-6600. That's our program that we started in March, where we're staffing it throughout the day with different people that can help answer questions.
So that's called the Acton what hotline?
Town Service.
Acton.
Town Service hotline.
What is the problem on the state's side in getting vaccines out to communities?
You know, I think if you watch the press conferences that the governor does, he does his best to try to explain what's happening. Most communities are given a maximum of 100 vaccines, and then.
100 vaccines a day or a week?
A week, a week. So if we get the 100 that we requested, we have a targeted group of folks that we're going to work to make sure they get vaccinated, primarily in senior housing and those at a home bond that we work with regularly throughout the year. And then we're doing this outreach that I mentioned earlier, this vaccine interest form, to make sure that we have a list of people that as we, if we're able to acquire more next time, that we'd reach out to and try to get more people vaccinated next time. We can only do one request a week, and our request is tomorrow, so we'll request for as much as that'll let us. And we'll hopefully get it next week by the end of next week, and we'll be able to announce things that we can do in ways we can help people get vaccinated. So it's really evolving quickly.
Is it, is it, is it right now the maximum we could request is 100? Any other questions for John on David?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm at this point, our first responders have had their first dose. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's all been made available to all of our first responders. And the second round is scheduled for the third week of February, I believe.
Great. Thank you. And John, further, in your COVID update?
We have, I just wanted to announce that the program that we did, we're doing with the four other communities, the $1.6 million, we've already received, we just got an update, 22 applications in total in the region, 19 of them in Acton. So I think that Selby and the work that he's done over the last year to develop direct connections to a lot of our businesses, I think that's really helped get the word out very quickly. And I think some of our neighbors don't have that same infrastructure that we've built here. So it's a nod to Selby and the work he's doing to keep our businesses informed. And hopefully those 19 will do all the paperwork they need to do to get, to get the up to 10,000 forgivable loan, and they'll be successful. And I'll be able to report out on it soon.
Anything on the virus in terms of numbers?
Yes, thank you. So today, as of today, we have 685 cases in total through the end of January. So I don't have today's number yet, but 685 as of last night, and 47 currently in isolation as of last night. So it's, we're hovering in that 40, 40, 40, 50 active cases range. And, you know, in talking to Heather today, who's doing a lot of contact tracing, it's been the same thing. It's been family gatherings. It's been, you know, small groups, you know. It's not, it's not these big events that people are getting, the spreading is happening. It's the small events that people don't think really matter, but they do because a person goes to a small event somewhere and goes back to their family and sees their uncle, and then you just spread it three times. So you got to wear your masks, you got to follow the rules. I know it's been a long time. People are tired of doing this, and I can understand. But we got to keep doing it until we get past these vaccination hurdles and we get the guidance that we can stop, so.
Are there any questions from board members? Okay. And our next item was to discuss proposed legislation regarding COVID. John, please.
So this is related to, as you recall, the legislation that allowed us to extend town meeting, to do things with the election, and to do virtual meetings like we're doing right now. That, I think, had an. That I think had an expiration date of the thirty-first of March, I believe. Uh, and so Town Council's office is working on draft legislation to extend some of those provisions, uh, further into the calendar year at least, uh, in, in the, in the case of virtual meetings. I think that it's, it's being proposed that they be allowed to continue, uh, per- permanently, uh, with certain restrictions. So I don't think we include it in the packet because I think it's still moving pretty quickly, but I just wanted to let the board know that that's in the works and see if there's any input on those high level concepts I just mentioned. And I know that, um, several other communities are looking at it as well. Just wanted to mention it to the board.
Thank you. So John, the next item was to approve our revisions to mortgage assistance program and emergency rental assistance program.
Yes, so we had a very successful program using CARES Act money, uh, that the board authorized us to do emergency rental assistance and then, uh, mortgage assistance. Both of those authorizations were, um, ended, uh, December thirty-first. In both programs, there was a little bit of funding left over from what you had, uh, authorized. And so what we're asking tonight is to authorize us to spend the rest of it, um, on those two programs. But we would actually like to shift. So I think as of today, there's just under fifteen thousand left in emergency rental assistance and there's about forty-five thousand left in mortgage assistance. So what we'd like to do is shift some of the mortgage assistance money into the rental assistance program so that the new mix would be, oh, so what we're asking you to do is to transfer the use of twenty-eight thousand three forty-nine from mortgage assistance to rental assistance. Cause we've, we've been able to help more, uh, families with the rental assistance program and we'd like to, to, uh, continue it that way. Laura Ducharme, our Community Outreach Coordinator, has done tremendous work working with homeowners and a lot of property owners and a lot of landlords and, um, different families. And, um, I think we could, we could use this money to help a lot more people in the first quarter of, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, if the board authorizes us to do so.
Okay, is there, are there any questions or comments to John though? So if not, then if we could, uh, rea- a motion, if, if someone would move to reallocate, twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars from the mortgage assistance program to the emergency rental assistance program.
I'll move.
Thank you, John. And a second?
Second, and, and also, uh, authorize, um, the, the town to spend this money in, in twenty twenty-one before March thirty-first. Because the, the authorization, um, expired December thirty-first.
Yeah, it, yeah, okay, yeah. John?
Would you mind not having a deadline and just say allow us to spend it this year? Wouldn't that be a friendly amendment?
Friendly, so John, your, your motion be the, that the, that the money transfer should be spent by the end of the twenty twenty-one calendar year, is that okay?
The, the balance of both funds should be spent by the end of the year. So we're, we're, if I'm understanding correctly, transferring twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars from the MAP program to the E, ERAP program and allowing the town to spend the balance of both programs this year.
Yes. Is that understood?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. So, um, uh, if there's no questions, David, if you'd call the role, please.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Yeah, I also say aye. That's unanimous.
So Jim, um, an update from the Climate Coalition, please?
Sure. Um, so these are some follow-up items from the, um, the Climate Emergency Warrant article that passed so overwhelmingly at the fall special town meeting. And, um, I know the agenda item is entitled, uh, Climate Coalition, which is the thirty-six, thirty-eight organizations that work together on that. But this is also the work of, um, uh, the, the Green Advisory Board, who's looked over these two items that I'd like to review with you. Um, and, um, the, the town manager and also Andrea Bissara, our new, Andrea Bissara, our new Sustainability Director. And, um, now there's plenty of other follow-up from that emergency petition, uh, and a lot of that is, is in the, is in the capable hands of Andrea. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more from her in the future about, uh, things like a climate action plan. But these are two, uh, concrete things that we can move ahead with now, um, that I wanted to let you know about. The first one was, um, an Acton, an Acton branded website to help households take climate action. And the second is an Acton Home Rule petition for, uh, clean energy homes. Um, the first one is really more in the form of an update. Uh, you might have questions or concerns about it or, or ideas. Uh, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a small move financially. It's, uh, it's, it's entirely within the, you know, the operational control of the, of the town manager's office. Uh, but the second one, uh, is a, is, is, um, is, is exactly in our bailiwick. It's the notion of, of going forward with, uh, with a, with a warrant article, um, for the, for the, for the spring town meeting scheduled for, for June twenty-first. So that one in particular, I'd like to make sure we have a, 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 a vote on, um, to make sure it's okay to proceed with investigating it further. So that's the background. Uh, here's, here's the, here's the two details. Um, so, um, to reach those pretty aggressive mobilization goals of the Climate Emergency Petition, we're gonna need action at every level, including, um, voluntary actions by individual households. Um, and, um, there is a nonprofit that was founded this, uh, last year by residents of Massachusetts towns who wanted to provide a, a climate action tool for their, for their residents. Um, and they saw an opportunity to reduce the cost of doing that by, you know, sharing, but sharing the development costs together and then offering it to other towns. So we've got towns like, um, Wayland, Framingham, Newton, uh, Concord, all have sites up and running on this platform that's called Mass Energize and, uh, many others are following suit. Um, and this is a, a, a site that has room for events, uh, testimonials, vendor lists, uh, teams and more, but most importantly, it has room for actions that people can take. The residents can look for actions on this website and sort on it in various ways. They can look for actions that are, uh, appropriate for renters or condo owners or homeowners. They can look at, uh, actions that are low cost or, or higher cost or high impact or low impact. And then they can choose to, they can learn more about them and they can, uh, get information potentially from coaches who would be available. They can commit to them and then, uh, indicate that they've done them. The website also provides a way to track overall, you know, how, how many people have signed up for actions? How much, how much, how many tons of carbon have we saved out of our carbon footprint? And it also allows, uh, people to sign up for teams. So one could, for example, imagine that the, uh, you know, that, the, 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 the New View neighborhood could compete with some other neighborhood across the way. Um, and, uh, the individual choices would still be private, but that team collective totals would be available for people to see. It's been successful in other towns. The cost is relatively low. It's fifteen hundred a year to get, fifteen hundred dollars initially to get started. A thousand dollars a year after that to keep it going. Um, the, the Green Advisory Board's discussed it positively and the Sustainability Director's offered to be the, uh, person who would be in charge of the actual, uh, publishing of making it go live. That speaks to some concerns, uh, that, um, that, that, uh, John's expressed, uh, our town manager, that if this is a joint venture between the Acton Climate Coalition and the Town of Acton, which is what we proposed, we want to make sure that this site doesn't, um, present, uh, like advocacy positions that are beyond what the board is comfortable with and what the town is comfortable with. So the advocacy would remain in the hands of the Acton Climate Coalition and its members. Uh, there would be pointers from the site to those, to those, uh, to that. It would be a pointer from the Mass Energize site to the Acton Climate Coalition site to find out if the people wanted to find out more. But the site itself would be just a source of, um, direct information about, uh, things that households can do and a way to, to track the totals. That's, that's that. There might be questions, concerns or ideas.
Okay, uh, questions, comments to board members? Okay, then. Jim, thank you very much.
Yeah, we will proceed with that. Um, the climate, there's a team within the Climate Coalition that's working on content and we will then work with, with Andrea to make it real. Um, and then we'll be back to help, get your help in advertising and let everybody know, uh, that they can, they can sign up. Um, the second piece was the, uh, the legislative piece. So I've been here once to talk about this. Um, so let me summarize. This is about a process to get us closer to, um, having new construction and major rehab, uh, have, um, fossil fuel-free sources of energy, um, that they not have, they not have pipes coming into them that are delivering, uh, oil or, or natural gas. Um, and the reason we're focusing on new construction is twofold. One is, um, w- once infrastructure gets in place, it typically stays there for a long period of time, uh, you know, many decades. And we're at the point where if you look at the, uh, our, our state's, uh, Climate Action Plan, the Global Warming Solutions Act, we're, 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 we're on a course of, of not have, not using fossil fuels by twenty fifty. So we don't want to be adding new, uh, new construction that has these sources in it. The other reason this is a good target now is that, um, uh, that is now, we've now achieved the point in finances and technology where with new construction, uh, uh, modern electric sources of heating like heat pumps, um, and, and air source, uh, hot water systems are now less expensive, uh, to build, uh, than mixed fossil fuel, uh, construction. So starting with new construction is a good place to start to not create any financial burdens on people. The, uh, so it's, it's a, it's a good chance to, 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 to move ahead. So, uh, this is, now I'm gonna get into some, uh, legal stuff and I'm sorry if it's, if it's, if it's, uh, confusing or repetitive. But basically Brookline passed a law, a bylaw to do this back in twenty nineteen. Um, the Attorney General, uh, said, who reviews all of our, all the bylaws passed by towns, said, uh, no, uh, you can't do that because the state has the right, has taken the right to regulate, uh, gas infrastructure and building codes, uh, and so you can't just arbitrarily override that. So towns that want to make this step forward, uh, now have some alternatives. And the alternative that we're gonna, uh, that I'm suggesting to us is a home rule petition. So a home rule petition is legislation filed on behalf of a town that says, in these special circumstances, legislature, please grant us, uh, s- special limited powers to do something that's normally under the control of the state. In this case, regulating, um, the delivery of fossil fuel, uh, fossil fuels into, into new buildings and major construction. There are a number of towns that are looking to do this. The, the way it works is that, that town meeting would pass, uh, uh, both the bylaw and, uh, in, in, uh, and, um, instructions to the Board of Selectmen saying, you know, please, please file a home rule petition. Please, please repress our legislative delegation to file, uh, this legislation for us. The bylaw would be written to say, this doesn't take effect unless there is, uh, some sort of legislative support for it. So it would not, uh, immediately, uh, ban this in new constru- would not immediately ban fossil fuels in new construction. It just allows it to eventually happen. So there's, what else? I've covered that, I've covered that, I've covered that. Um, we did talk with our legislative team, um, with our Senator and our two reps, and their feedback was, you, we're totally happy to carry something like this into the legislature. However, uh, you should not expect that this would pass anytime soon, if at all. What it really provides from their point of view is, is pressure, a pressure to the legislature to do something, to allow cities and towns that want to do this to go ahead. So there might be, you know, statewide enabling legislation. Um, there is, there is some of that even being filed now. It's not clear where it's headed. It's not in that big climate bill, um, that's sitting on the governor's desk right now. The other purpose for it though, and, uh, the, the legis- the legislative, uh, team agreed on this with us, is it provides us a lot of opportunity to do education. So we would be talking, uh, to people about, um, why they might not want to have fossil fuels in their house, how it gets in the way, how it creates the natural gas, creates a situation where there, this, it's a poisonous gas that's explosive, that's entering your house, you might not want that. Um, and provides us a, an opportunity to talk about the alternatives. You know, like Acton TV has a wonderful induction stove top that works entirely from electricity that they use for all their cooking shows. There's a chance to explain why that's a good thing, um, why, why chefs really like it. There's a chance to talk about heat pumps, uh, there's a chance to talk about other, other technologies. So even though it's, the bylaw is just intended, is just for new construction and, and, you know, major like gut rehab, um, the, uh, the opportunity to educate would be for everyone. I mean, if someone is getting close to replacing a heating system or wants to add air conditioning, be a great chance for, for them to get information about heat pumps, which can provide both heating and cooling. So really what I would like, uh, from the board is to consider whether you are interested in, um, authorizing town staff to take this a little further, which would mean things like, uh, a, a review with town council, uh, visits to, uh, key town staff, um, and town committees. Um, and after that process, which might include changes in the language, uh, then we would, uh, come back to the board for, you know, formally adding it to the warrant and then eventually taking a vote to whether we would formally recommend it or not. But at this point, uh, I'd, I'd love to get any, you know, questions, concerns or ideas and then, uh, um, a vote on the board of whether it's okay to proceed.
Okay, um, David?
I'm v- very much in favor of this. Uh, we, we talked about this a little bit, uh, uh, la- last year. It makes no sense to me, uh, to put in, um, natural gas infrastructure that's gonna last at least seventy-five years when, you know, uh, to, to prevent, um, really escalating, uh, global warming, we really have to stop burning fossil fuels in thirty years. So it's, um, uh, you know, again, it just doesn't make any sense. It also doesn't make any sense financially. Uh, we, we know that, that, the, the two big projects we have in town, the, the big twin school project, um, and the, uh, fire station, both of them projections cost for it to cost less over the life of the, um, uh, the bonds that pay off those, uh, um, those, those buildings. So, you know, if we, if we had put in natural gas heating, um, um, in both those buildings, it actually would have caused us more over the life of the, the bonds. Uh, both of those, um, um, buildings have systems that are, um, uh, more expensive to install, but much less expensive to operate. N- n- normal, uh, 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 electric infrastructure costs, um, le- less to install and a little bit more to operate. But that, that's actually improving a- all the time. So, uh, but the investment to get going is less. And, um, in many cases, it's completely awash, again, over the life of paying off, uh, the building, whether it's a, a mortgage or, you know, however you're paying for a new, new construction. So I'm completely in favor of this. I think we should move forward.
Dean?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I prefaced my remarks by saying, you know, my heart doesn't bleed for the gas company. And, uh, and most of the, uh, considerable amount of the, the heating and cooling in my house is now being provided with air source heat pumps, which work very well. That said, um, I'm concerned about the cost impact for, for new construction. Certainly with the town projects that David cited. You know, we took a mu- much longer view of the cost of these things because we know we're gonna own those buildings for a long time. But I'm really concerned about the immediate impact on the cost of housing. If, if indeed Jim now says that it's, it's actually cheaper to use these air source heat pumps than it is to use natural gas, if that's really true, then I think, you know, some education of the builders and the problem solves itself. You know, I, I think builders are certainly out there to find the most efficient way of doing things and the cheapest. So I'm really, you know, I question why we want to do that if indeed. why we want to do that if indeed the metrics that Jim talked about that is cheaper. Why do we have to force people to do it if it's in their best interest financially to do it anyway? So I've got some big questions in that. I'm also concerned about, you know, the educational piece of it. I need to make sure that if this goes ahead, that we're not going to be spending a whole lot of time with our staff and a whole lot of dollars with our town council pursuing this. So I, I don't want to approve any kind of an open ended agreement. I'd certainly want to hear input from the town manager as to what sort of limits you can put on. We're already down staff. Staff is already working pretty hard and just to load something else onto them, I would not be in favor of that without hearing a full report from the town manager as far as what the impact of that would be. So those are my concerns. At this point, you know, I'm not going to outright say, no, I would not support this, but I need to hear a whole lot more before I get behind asking Jim to move ahead with this.
Uh, John?
Yeah, I think more information would be helpful.
Uh, John, from, from your perspective and staffs?
Well, I did meet with Jim on this recently and several months ago as well. And I think I'd have to spend more time to try to answer the question of what the exact commitment of time would be. But it's something that, you know, we do have a dedicated resource in Town Hall to help move things like this along if, if the board wants them to be moved along. Whereas before it would be me doing it or a group of people trying to work together. So that's one advantage we have now that we didn't have two weeks ago. But I do think that, you know, I understand the question and I guess I'd want a little more time to answer it fully unless there's more details that I'm just not remembering about the staff commitment.
So, so Jim, is it two levels? It's, it's getting behind a home rule petition to, to say for all new construction, it's got to be air source heat pumps.
Well, it has to be not fossil fuels, so not, not natural gas.
Okay, so that's one piece. And then the other piece would be education to builders and contractors. Would you really consider doing it this way?
Right, and it's also education to homeowners who might want to consider, you know, if they're, if they're approaching a remodeling or a new heating system, to give them the information about costs. Yeah. That information could be sourced from the coalition, would just need to be reviewed by staff before it went on, out under the town's name. I think the key people that would be involved in this project would be one pass from town council to make sure this actually looks, you know, is well written and it's, it would hold up to scrutiny. And then sometime with, with the, with the, with the building inspector and possibly with the planning staff to make sure that this makes sense to them. The, the comment from the, the town council is that they are working on an exactly identical process with the town of Concord. So they're very familiar with it. It won't take them long to review it. And we've deliberately chosen language that's very similar to theirs.
That would be for the home rule petition?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For what, for what, what we would go ahead to, to town meeting. The, the educational piece I would describe as, you know, the kind of education that's helpful to, to help this thing pass, but it also has a good side effect of, of getting information in the hands of people. The other, the other thing it's, I think I didn't cover in the, in the proposed bylaw is that it has a specific process for waivers and exceptions. And they're specifically around the financial impact of this. So for example, there's currently no good technological solution for domestic hot water for residential buildings that are more than 10,000 square feet. So that, for example, is exactly the situation that the Main Street Affordable Housing Project is in. So this bylaw would explicitly not require them to spend the extra money to operate a all electric domestic hot water heating system. It also provides for an appeal process to, to, to the building inspector with a, with a, with an appeal beyond that to the, to the town manager. So it's, it's the intent of the bylaw and the way it's designed is, is specifically not to add extraordinary extra costs to, to builders and homes.
Okay, so, so where we are now, could we give the go ahead to proceed with the, with the home rule legislation petition that would track what Concord's doing? And that applies against all new construction?
Yeah, I, I would, yeah, that's what I'm looking for really is, is the ability to come back to this board with a more fully vetted home rule petition.
Okay.
Talking with staff and town council and addressing the kind of concerns that, that Dean's raised about cost.
So we are, are we all on board with, with that approach?
Uh, seems like not. So maybe an actual vote would be appropriate? So we make sure it's a majority?
Okay, so Jim, would you have a motion then?
Sure, I'd like to move that we ask the town manager to go ahead and work with town staff and town council to bring back a more fully developed warrant article for this topic.
And the, the topic of the, of the home rule petition? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on it? Dean?
Uh, before I vote, I, I'd just like to, you know, put some more detail on this as far as the amount of town staff time is going to be involved in doing this limited step. And I'm just trying to get my, my arms around that. Certainly, it seems like it's something that's worth researching, but I don't want to, I want to put some, some sharp limits on it as to how far it's going to go when it comes back to us and exactly the commitment of both legal time and town staff time. So if you could quantify that, I'd feel a lot better about it. And if the town manager has any input on that, I'd be grateful to hear that as well.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to hear John Mandorati's point of view of that and I'd be happy to amend my, my motion to be more specific.
John?
Well, I think the question that you're asking me is how long is it going to take to take what the coalition and others have crafted and bring it to a form that we are comfortable bringing back to the board to consider adding to the warrant? Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it would, it would take a few weeks to try to catch a, a couple of annual meetings and a couple of staff meetings. And maybe a direct conversation or two in between. So it's something that hasn't been on our plate. But again, given the new resource we brought in for things like this, I think it's something that I could ask Andrea to take the lead on and we could, we could come back to the board in a month or two with something.
Does that help Dean?
Sorry, is that good enough?
Does that help Dean?
Well, that, that helps. I sympathize with the town manager having this dropped in his lap. You know, normally, I would think these are the sorts of things that should be brought forward in our goal setting meetings. You know, dumping something like this right in the, right in the middle of budget preparation and all that. I, you're not doing anybody any favors. And frankly, Jim, you know, having a a poorly prepared presentation is worse than no presentation at all. So I'm, I'm still, I'm still very skeptical and I, I think I, I prefer to have, I mean, the town manager is kind of acting live on this whole thing right now. I prefer that we delay this vote until our next meeting so that we can flesh this thing out a little better, you and the town manager can, so that we really know what we're getting ourselves into here. So at that point, you know, at this point, I, I would vote no, but I'd be happy to, you know, hear about it again in a couple of weeks. Once we, once we've seen something in black and white.
Would you, Jim, would you be willing just to put this over to our, our meeting on February 22nd?
Well, given the approaching town meeting, I think I'd rather, I'd rather have a vote now and proceed with caution.
Okay, so we have a, a motion that's been seconded. If there's no further discussion, David call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Gardner?
No.
Uh, Mr. Charter?
No.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
And I say aye as well. So it passes three to two.
I appreciate that it's a close vote. So I mean, I'm hoping that the manager will be able to take that into account. And, you know, clearly Dean's concern is that we not spend, you know, too much staff time on this. So I hope we can find a way to do that. I'll bet you we can.
Well, what we're dealing with is, is a war, is coming back with a warrant article.
Yes.
And we deal with a home rule petition.
Yes.
Which Concord is ahead of us on. And we'd largely, because it's the same law firm that's putting it together for them. I think much of the work is done.
Yeah, I think we can do this in a minimal time.
And, and other towns are also doing this.
Yes.
This won't be the only request that the legislature gets. And they're all related because everybody looks over their shoulder and sees what the other town is doing. But, you know, whether they're the same law firm or not, they, you know, so.
But everyone's going in the direction. When, when Maureen Healy had a strike down the, the Brookline bylaw, she, you know, did it very reluctantly. And said, I'm sorry, I have to do this. It's what you're going to have to do.
And, and as Jim, Jim says, it, you know, basically, i- if they pass a few of these home rule petitions, it'll just motivate the legislature to have standard law across the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
Rather than a patchwork of laws in every town.
It's all good.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, Jim, thank you. Okay, the next, and Jim, I'm sorry for seemingly prematurely cutting you off, but I'm sorry.
I did not experience that.
Okay. So our next item is to, discussion of the board vacancy. On, on Friday, the 29th, the town clerk's office received Joan's letter of resignation for the board effective June 22nd. That would, assuming when, that would be the date for town meeting, but it's effective as of that date. We can set a date for the special election at any date after June 22nd. So I would suggest for our discussion purposes that we set the election a week later for Tuesday, June 29, which would allow for the election to be held prior to the Fourth of July holiday and ahead of our next board meeting on, on Monday, July 12, when that would be the new board meeting for the first time and to reorganize and to elect new officers. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then could we, could somebody move that we set a special election for Tuesday, June 29 to fill the vacancy in the seat Joan, uh, uh, Corin Holes due to her resignation, which is effective on June 22nd.
And I'll second, and there's a hand up, John.
Sure.
Uh, Linda? Please go ahead.
Yeah, Linda Viera from 401 Great Elm Way.
Yeah.
I was wondering why Joan's vacancy cannot be included in the March election. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, the, the special election can't, cannot take place until after the effective date of Joan's resignation. The effective date of Joan's resignation is Tuesday, um, June 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean economically, I would agree with you, which should be.
Okay, no, no other hands, John.
Okay, so thank you. So if motion's been made and seconded.
Did someone second?
Did you second it? Or, or Jim will second. I thought you had seconded. Okay.
I, I couldn't remember. Sorry.
Okay. So no further discussion. If no further discussion, then let's, David call the roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay. So our next item also related to town meeting is to open the town meeting warrant and set the date for closing the warrant. John, would you leave the discussion on that?
Sure, thank you. So the, the board decided recently to hold the meeting, the annual town meeting on June 21st. Typically, we, the board would open the warrant right about now probably and then set a date certain for it to be closed. And the date that you're talking about as a date certain to be closed wouldn't be the date that we stop adding articles. It would just be the date that we stop accepting private articles from citizens. And that's just something that's done traditionally here to help, allow us to get the warrant in shape as we get closer and let the selectmen decide ultimately what goes on the warrant in time for town meeting and all the timelines that have to happen later this spring.
Would you ever suggest a date?
Uh, is Mark, let me just bring Mark in here. If he's a.
He's on there, John.
Well, what are we thinking for a date, Mark?
Looking at the calendar, I'm, I'm thinking sometime in the early part of April, either the first or second week.
So, okay. So that would be when, so just to clarify, when are we printing or when are we publishing the warrant based on a June 21 timeline?
The warrant will be posted on June 7th.
Okay.
So that gives us all of May and maybe half of April to run any petitions that we've got through council and get them printed, get them formatted and whatnot.
And so the only consideration for a timeline in that nature is for the planning board. You're appointing a fifth member on it, or it's on the agenda if you do so. And as you know.
It's already been approved.
Oh, I missed, oh, sorry, that was at the beginning. So we have five members. Great. The articles that are related to zoning need to be heard by the planning board. They need to hold a public hearing. So they need to have time to have that process occur. So the earlier in April or even the later in March would probably be better just from that standpoint to make sure that the planning board can get their hearings in.
Okay, so did you want to close the warrant on March 31st? Or?
Okay, I, I just wanted to understand how the closing of the warrant relates to the planning board hearing the zoning articles? Oh, and, and you're saying if, if a member of the public put in a, a petition, uh, I got it, understood.
It only relates, it only relates to citizen petitions.
Right, no, I, I understood that. I, I, I was trying to think, got it, sorry.
There is a planning board meeting scheduled on April 20th and it looks like March 16th, one before that.
So, so Mark, would you have a specific date to suggest?
I, I think March 31st works well. That's a Wednesday.
Great, okay.
Okay, I move we close the warrant March 31st?
Is there a time that we have to do at 5:00 PM on March?
Uh, it just said close of business.
Close of business.
And, and Joan, a friendly amendment to open the warrant immediately? Now? No, we have to open the warrant.
Okay, so, so the, the motion would be, we open the, we, we open the annual town meeting warrant on, it's listed today, February 1, and it's to close at the close of business on Wednesday, March 31st.
Joan is nodding. I second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm wondering, since we're talking calendars right now, can we review just how this also impacts the, how the, how the election calendar works for the special election?
Well, the election for, for the, for the special election, it just, the corporate handle that every, w- once we set, we set the date for the 29th of June and then everything works off of that in terms of last day to register for that. in terms of uh last day to register for that election, when nominating petitions go out.
Okay. That's just straight out of the town charter, I could just read up on that?
Um, I think the the clerk, the the uh, the state would set that.
Okay.
There there are certain ro- you know, dates, yes, there are timing. Mark, that would be in the ch- in the charter or the bylaw?
Uh actually, some of those are general laws uh that that set the last day of uh voter registration. And um he was on the, on the, as an attendee here, if we wanted to bring.
Actually, just per- perhaps at the next uh meeting, uh the town manager could announce those dates the same way he announced them for the March election today.
Yeah, if if you if you look at the um, the email that um that um Ezra Uncle Polier sent us last week, there's a box that sets the, not the specific dates, but how many days you need prior to the election for these various things to happen.
Great.
So we could, we could bring that in for the, for our next meeting on the on twenty twenty second.
Thank you.
But it just all works backwards and it's triggered. Okay, so um are we set then on the motion which has been made and seconded to open the warrant this evening and to close it at the close of business on on March, Wednesday, March thirty one? So no further comment, then David call the roll, please.
Uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay, so um John, our our next uh, our next item is to consider further um modification of the um Act of Housing Authority's option agreement.
Thank you, yes, the board has voted this option a few times, and I would ask that the uh one further modification be considered and also that the board consider concluding in its vote uh authority for me to finalize any minor language uh adjustments needed with the chair uh that uh rather than bringing it back again, and at 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 the chair's discretion whether it's substantive enough to have to bring back further. Uh in this case, uh in the exhibit that we modified last time, which contained the purchase and sales agreement for the actual ac- uh transaction, we had referenced uh the area that the uh housing authority would repair if it damaged the proposed dog park, and we referred to it as Lot One, and that was confusing. So we're instead referring to it as the easement area, which is uh clearer, and uh that's the only change. And I I asked the board to approve and also consider other motion I suggested.
Yeah, um I uh spoke to, i- it was, it was uh Tom Glesby, who's chair of the Dog Park Committee, um, who raised the issue that he was confused, was it just um Lot One or was it Lot Four? And I passed it on to Town Council, and she indicated that was a good point and and made these uh corrections accordingly.
Is the easement area the area over or under Isaac Davis Way? Cause what we're talking about is the lower lot.
The easement area is the area that will contain the septic system that they're constructing on the other parcels.
Including the leaching field.
Yeah, so the area that wherever they build a a septic system to support the housing authority project, they'll require an easement over that area to to cover it and to maintain it.
So it's Lot One, Lot Lot One, Lot Four, and Parcel A. I think last time it was just Lot One. So this brings the two additional parcels in, and we call it, you know, together the easement area. So is, uh Jim?
Well, I I would be happy to move that we uh accept these uh these specific changes uh and um that we have future changes be approvable by the um by the town manager in consultation with the with the board chair.
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded, or is there any further discussion? Okay, so David, if you'd call the roll, please.
Yep, uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay, so our our final um item of the evening is I take it while we, with the participants are here for a for a further discussion um on the on the Kmart parcel. Um, we have gotten a number of comments um via um email to our uh selectmen's uh shell, and I saw, you know, others have gotten, you know, personal comments from uh from individuals. So um, you know, there are a number of ideas out there, and you've all had a week to uh to think further. So um I'd like to take comments first from John, then from board members. And I I asked Chris Hardy, uh a younger resident in town, who was uh conducted a a survey via uh multiple Facebook, Facebook groups in town and to report on his survey, how we set it up and what the results are. Um, I've reached out to Jennifer uh um Abardi, who had an idea of a community center, she'd report back on it. And I think Mary Evans, a neighbor of mine, uh suggested um low income housing on the project and that Jim, look to Jim, and if Jim would leave that piece of the discussion. And um John might also want to talk about his senior housing continuum, and um Selby, if he's here, may want to talk about a life science research facility. But let's start with John and then um go through the board, and we will take uh citizen comments.
Thank you very much. At at the discussion last week about Kmart, a lot of interesting uh points were raised. I just wanted to clarify two things that I said that night that I think some people have asked me some follow up on. Uh the first was I mentioned that we have a surplus of uh vacant commercial properties. And the second was related to uh the tax impact and the new growth potential uh for the property as it is now. Uh so just to go over the vacant properties, uh the E D C, the Economic Development Committee members, uh the volunteers that work there, and Selby, they did a a quick survey over the last few weeks of vacant commercial properties. And in their, in their preliminary windshield survey, they found at least thirty five um properties that were vacant, many along Great Road, uh some along uh Main Street. Um, and you know, there's various different sizes, the Kmart is is a good example of another vacant property. Uh there's a, the old bookstore on Great Road, uh Gould Plaza has a lot of vacancies. So we had, when I said we have a surplus, that's what I meant. Um, and I think I have some good news on some of those surplus uh vacant properties that uh there's some economic development happening, uh even though we've been in a pandemic, uh there has been some ha- stuff happening behind the scenes. Uh the former Willow Books property that I mentioned is gonna be turned into um an Asian food market uh sometime in this calendar year, uh which is excited, exciting rather. It's all gonna include, it's also gonna include a small restaurant uh as part of it. There's a new diner or breakfast spot called As Good As It Gets opening up uh on Nagog Park where Bickford's used to be. I think that'll be uh pretty soon. They've been delayed, but I think it'll be pretty soon. And then the former Sea Change Building uh in Nagog Park, that is in the process of being uh removed and turned into a hundred and nineteen thousand square foot of flex office and warehouse space. Uh so that's a pretty big new uh building that's being built right now. We don't know exactly what's gonna go in there, but it's gonna be some type of commercial, probably life science, uh what's given, what's over there already. Uh there's another couple of things I wanted to mention, the Bee's Knees is a British importer that's opening up on Main Street in West Acton, five sixty two Main Street. I think they're opening next week, actually. Uh Middlesex Bank, you've all seen that, uh as you've driven by the former Coolen Press, that building is underway, looks uh looks like it's shaping up. And I guess uh another bank will be moving into its old location. Other things is a massage, Elements Massage recently moved into one thirty eighth Great Road, Laser Med Spa moved into uh the former Elements space uh at Brookside Shop. So while there's some a surplus, we have some things happening, um and it's exciting. Uh as it gets, as it comes to the Kmart property, that uh is three parcels. It's um assessed at around five point six, five point seven million. It it brings in about a hundred and thirty one thousand in taxes every year. And I think the, you know, when we talked about different ways the property could be reused, some reuses will have very little impact on commercial tax base. Uh and one thing that we talk about with the finance committee and other folks is that one way, one way to make sure that residential tax relief can occur or or we take pressure off residential taxpayers is to increase commercial tax growth. So while there are a lot of great ideas and visions for this parcel, was part of the re-envisioning of Kelly's Corner, I think I look forward to seeing how those play out. I just wanted to mention the tax implication part of it, that if it's just reused at in its current form, it'll have very little impact on commercial growth. Even if they redo McDonald's into something similar, it'll have a a minor uh increase in commercial taxes, which is nice, but it wouldn't have a a significant change. Uh if some of the things that the chair mentioned in his memo last week came to fruition, the large life science uh space, that would certainly have an impact on commercial growth. Uh even the uh the assisted living and continuum of care, even though people live there, it's actually a commercial tax base. Uh so it's something that not everyone um uh recognizes when we're talking about how things impact our taxes. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page with that, and um I look forward to everyone's comments here tonight and as we continue the conversation about uh Kmart, this is a vital piece of property in the heart of uh Kelly's Corner.
You said there were thirty five vacant storefronts along Great Road?
Great Road and Main Street, um and a little bit uh in South Acton, but primarily on Great Road.
And and the 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 new one, one uh uh one a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of flex space, that's up in Nagog Park, isn't it? That's a building that's being converted.
That's correct.
Okay, so um Jim, do you want to start that conversation?
Um, sure, can you describe to me what you'd like me to talk about again? Cause I it sort of came as a surprise.
Uh well, well, you can talk about whatever you want, uh but um 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 Mary Evans um sent a a letter about building low income housing on the um on the parcel and said that it sort of linked you to that as a, an advocate for that.
Okay.
Idea, so.
Sure, um, so I think in this case, it's important to make some distinctions about the different kinds of housing that we call uh, you know, affordable. Um, I think, John, you made this distinction also at at uh at at last week's meeting, but just to sort of lay it out again. Um, there's the kind of, there's the kind of um, there's the kind of housing where the town has made sure that it's one hundred percent affordable. Um, and that typically involves town owned land um or a close relationship with the developer who wants to uh make this change. So examples would be the developments in process on on Mass Ave, uh just outside of Kelly's Corner, and uh the development on Main Street uh that we were talking about earlier, um, you know, um, up up there just north of Route Two. Um, so that's, that's, that's one kind of affordable housing that would meet uh, that needs, but particularly low income people. Typically be rental housing, it could be uh restricted by age, so there's, you know, there's there's affordable uh uh housing for for the elderly or the disabled, like on Main Street. But all these things would uh probably require the town to make an investment before this happened. Uh either acquiring the parcel or somehow uh achieving control of the parcel long enough to, you know, to get a a non-profit developer interested in in uh in doing the the housing. And that that takes, uh as we've seen in our other projects around town, a couple of years to happen. So it's a, it would, it's a process that would require a lot of uh, a lot of patience um and a a lot of delays on any potential tax tax income, and prob- some permanent. Um, the other kind of l- lower cost housing that we've seen a lot of is um uh forty B developments, uh you know, which are typically a mix of market rate uh and uh housing that would be for um people at uh higher levels of income than the uh the truly public housing. Um, sometimes at eighty percent of median income, sometimes sixty percent of median income. Um, and that's um, that's the kind of housing that I have not heard much enthusiasm for in uh in Acton or on that site in particular. Um, not entirely, I mean, there are, there are certainly advocates for that, and you know, if they could, the the thing that's different now is that because we are in a safe harbor, that is because a developer can't just come in and say, I have the right to ignore all the local zoning bylaws and just put in, just just adhere to state zoning bylaws to put affordable housing in. That's the situation we were in until um just recently. So we could potentially uh entertain an offer from a forty B developer that would have a much higher percentage of affordable housing or would have housing that was uh much smaller, um, uh so that it wouldn't uh, you know, bring in. Um, so we, small housing is a need that we definitely have in Acton, uh both because of our senior population, um single population and um and um, you know, other populations that are typically underserved by by housing possibilities in Acton. Um, so that's another possibility that would not require us to uh own the land, but it would require that um, you know, we 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 work uh assertively with potential forty B developers in a way that we haven't done before. So it'd be a new, a new area uh for Acton's uh uh Acton to take, but I think it's something we can do. Me personally, I'm still confused. I um, you know, I think the conversations we've had, I thi- the conversation was really revealing to me about Ocean State Job Lot, both the conversation we had in the meeting and all the emails and the Facebook posts. Um, I I'm I'm much more open to it as a possibility than I was before. I think it's because of their um, their their peculiar model of sort of working on um, you know, failures of or changes in business models of other organizations to bring in these, these odd lots of, you know, large amounts of stuff that changes uh, you know, periodically. It's not a a general purpose um department store. It's not, it's not, it's not a Kmart, uh it, which is good and bad. Uh it's not, and it's not a competition for stores that are able to provide predictable uh things, even if they are slightly more expensive uh month after month. They are, it's an opportunistic place to shop for those who find shopping to be either recreational or, you know, sort of a hunting venture to find cool inexpensive stuff, I think it provides a market. Uh and I think um the notion that that's just not, not Acton, uh I think is is dangerously wrong. Uh, you know, if we have a, if we have a self-image of our town, or some of us have a self-image of our town as a kind of, you know, uh exclusive, exclusive, high-class place, uh that's not what Acton is. Um, we're a town, we're a town like other towns. Uh other towns have Ocean State Job Lots, we can too. I don't think it would put other businesses out of business. I think it would just, it would mean that we would lose the opportunity to do, you know, the larger scale, exciting things that we've talked about, uh but most of which would require a major investment uh and a lot of time and a lot of planning. And we're not ready to take on right now. You know, I'd still love to have a a community center there, but I know it's, that's a long planning process to figure out what's really needed there. Uh and it's a long process of figuring out that it's okay to spend that much money. I'm open to it, but I see it as a uh a less likely path because it's more risky and more expensive.
Okay, um, John?
Well, I think when these tax bills went out, a lot of people were um unhappy. We have the new school, we have the fire station, and we have Minuteman Tech. And all of those are gonna impact the tax bill for quite a while. We don't own this parcel. We can only talk to the people who are entertaining office on the parcel. And personally, I shopped at Kmart, as I think many others did in town. It was very convenient instead of driving to Bedford or one of the other towns. So I don't think we should consider buying it.
Uh David?
Yeah, um, I I I agree with both side, J- Joan and 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 Jim. I I I don't think we should consider buying it, uh you know, not only is building something, they're going to be very, like a community center. I mean, everybody would love to have a community center, but there is no, I have not heard any proposals for how to come up with the money in a way that's inventive and doesn't just involve the the town buying, uh you know, six million dollars. Uh, you know, six million dollars worth of land and, and w- building a multi-million dollar, uh, building. Remember that, that. You know, that, that, the new, the new twin school is a very big building. Um, and it probably doesn't need to be that big, but that building, um, what costs a hundred and seventeen million dollars, right? It's an enormous, uh, expenses. So even if we built a building one quarter that size. That is an enormous amount of money. Um, and, um. Uh, and, and, and with, with no way to pay for it and the loss of tax revenue there, we wouldn't get. The hundred and thirty some odd thousand dollars a year in, in tax revenue, which means all of our taxes would go up even further. You know, uh, uh, last time, uh, uh, John Benson talked about the fact that. You know, uh, you know, a, a shopping center kind of, uh, situation there. We haven't had any developer. Uh, come to us for that kind of thing. It's probably not economically viable. I, I know that it would be. Uh, nice for a lot of people to have, um, a little, you know, expanded shopping there, but also as the. Town manager points out, we have a lot of, uh, uh, storefronts now that entrepreneurs could, uh, could use. Um, uh. You know, it, it boils down to me to, 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 to two possibilities. Also, I'm not sure that that. And I said this last time, that this is not the place for housing. If, if as a last resort, I mean, I'd rather have housing there than. Have it, you know, just have the empty building there. But I think, uh, this space near Kelly's Corner is better used for, for, for some, something else. And the, the two, the two things for me is some inventive kind of mixed use. You know, I'd be open to seeing proposals on there, but that whether. We want to support that, I think depends on the specific proposal, you know. Uh, whether we have a life science research place and retail below, that's certainly. A very interesting possibility, I think. Um, um, but you know, someone has to propose. Propose that. I mean, that's cer- certainly something I would be, yeah, in, in, interested in, in looking at. And, and finally, I agree with what, uh, the, the, uh, Joan and Jim said too about, um. And, and Jean said last time about Ocean State Job Lot, you know, um, uh, I, I don't think that's a big. Uh, competition for other, uh, act, acting businesses. Um, you know, I know. Uh, 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 people now have to drive. Out of town for some basics that, uh, to get basics at a reasonable price, some of which are the kind of things that Ocean State Job Lot carries. Um, and, um, uh, I know, I've been, I didn't know this beforehand, but I've been told in the. Past week, and I assume that you guys have too, that a number of people in town drive out of town to another O- Ocean State Job Lot. Uh, to be able to get the stu- the stuff that they, they want. And I think the open state, uh, uh. Ocean State Job Lot. Has another advantage too is because it's not just that store. It's, they, they proposed. Um, yeah, uh, possibly using part of the building for another store, which, um. You know, uh, I, I think mi- maybe we, we could look into and make a proposal for. You know, uh, some kind of business that would be oriented towards the, the youth, uh, that are just across the, you know, we have. Uh, what's three thousand junior high and high school kids just across the street? You know, there may be some business that can serve, uh, students after school that are, they're looking for a, a place. Um, or possibly we could, you know, uh, talk about renting that at, from the town to, to do some community space. If we wanted to do that, but I think to me that's predicated on, you know, uh, Ocean State Job Lot taking the, the, the main part of the building. And rejuvenating the restaurant. I mean, you know, that, that's the kind of. Blight that's right next to the street, uh, uh, on Main Street. It's, it's, it's an eyesore, you know, it's kind of the last thing we, we want in town. I would love to have, you know. Any kind of restaurant there. And again, I think it's an opportunity for the, um, you know, uh. You know, we, we talked last night about having these little upscale restaurants, but I, and I'm fine with that, cause, uh, but, um. Again, this is so close to the school campus. You know, a, a place that's, that students would appreciate, I think is, it might be a good business model for somebody. So, um, uh, anyway, I, I. I, I, you know, and I, I, I think the, the majority of people who have contacted me are in favor of that, that, that proposal. So I. I, I would ask them back. Thank you.
And Dean?
Yeah, well. The first three speakers stole all my good points. Um. You know, that, for the town to buy the property is, is a couple of people have suggested, you know, it's six million dollars. You permanently take it off the tax roll, so you lose that revenue. Uh, Sudbury just recently voted to rebuild their community center. I think it's called the Fairbanks Community Center. And it took many years to get to that point. Um, it's an existing building that, that was deteriorating. And I think that it was either fifteen or twenty million dollars that they approved their town meeting and an override vote to do that. Um, and I could easily see anything that people could imagine. Um, going well beyond that. People have even posited, you know, town pools and that sort of thing. It's just beyond the reach of, of what I think people are willing to, to go for. Folks have said. Now, gee, we should get, you know, some nice cheap space so kids will have places to go and stuff. Well, basically what happens then is that. The senior citizens on fixed incomes who represent an increasing large portion of this town. Are just getting taxed higher and higher to support somebody else's kids. And that's fine. I think, you know, seniors were willing to do that, but at some point you have to say, you know. No, we've got to level out the, uh, the ship a little bit here. So I can't. And looking at. At, at the Kennedy property, um. You know, I think we've owned that for four or five years already. We've not gotten any tax revenue off it. Um, the best we could do is turn it over to the Housing Authority. We'll, we, we will continue to not get any tax relevant out of it. I think it's a great project. But, you know, you're talking, uh. From beginning to end, by the time people actually move in there, you know. We're probably looking at something close to ten years. And I think that that's the same sort of thing it could be faced if. If somebody decided to buy the camp, if the town decided to buy the Kmart property. So I just don't see that as a starter. Um. I think we have such a limited amount of commercial space in town. We should preserve as much commercial space as possible. I think we should have retail in there. Uh, as a draw, because if folks are coming in to see the Acton Ocean State Job Lots. Maybe they'll stop at some of the other stores in Kelly's Corner, which is what we're trying to do is draw people in there. So. For all of those reasons, uh, I think that we should, you know, ask the town manager to pick up the phone. And, uh, if it's not Ocean State, um. You know, some other business like that, somebody that's interested in doing it. And not ending up with a, a blighted sight, which is what we've had at the McDonald's for fifteen years. And, uh, you know, potentially it could be fifteen years looking at a blighted sight there at Kmart, if we just randomly say, well. We have to think about this. So I think we get. Go out there, market it, try to get people interested in it. Um, and, uh. I think the overwhelming number of people that I've seen either emails to the board or, or. Emails or comments to me personally, all have been in favor of some sort of a. A discount store, um, Ocean State, Target, um. Whatever, but let's keep it in the retail use.
Yeah, I, I think the, the, well, we, we still have two groups, the, two key groups in town committees to hear from. The Economic Development Committee, which is meeting on Thursday night. And the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, which has been at this for a number of years and. They're trying, they'll have a meeting next week, either Monday or Wednesday or Thursday. So this would involve another discussion at, at our next, at our meeting on the twenty second. But I think the important thing for us is to be, you know, proactive in the hunt. And to try to, you know, narrow it down to, you know, you know, two or perhaps as many as three. Um, ideas for the, uh, parcel and, you know, um, as I, you know, often said, you've come to this job, you have to have an open mind and. We did hear a lot of comments, uh, you know, that a discount department store, um, you know, would be welcome. Not only from seniors, and I think you'll hear it from Chris Hardy. Um, the Facebook groups that hate balls have younger people in there who would like to see that as well. Now. You know, Jim, that's going to bring, you know, a lot more traffic in the area because it'll bring people from, from out of town. The, you know, the store that tends to, you know, come up as the most popular. Um, is, you know, is Target. So, um. Maybe one thing that should come out of tonight is we could ask John if he would. Reach out to Target and see if there's really, you know, any interest on their part. Um, you know, to, to want to, you know, come here and, and, and purchase that space. Um. I would, um, agree with, with everyone else that. It, it's, it's just not financially viable to go out and. And purchase the parcel for six million dollars and then you're gonna have to, you know, tear down the existing facility. And, you know, and to be honest, from, from what I understand, it's about fifteen or twenty million dollars to build a community center. And, you know, there's no money coming in. You're gonna have to staff it and. We got, you know, one note, uh, you know, could we have, uh, a YMCA come in and build a community center? Well. The YMCA's don't build a community center. You build a center for them, they'll come in and run it. But, you know, the, the cost is on us. And I, I just don't see it as taking it on. So, you know, it's, um, you know, the. You know, the pandemic and online marketing has really kind of narrowed down what it is that we can do and I. Um, what I, I did learn in the last week is, you know, the hot area in development. Is, is life science research facilities. A lot of money from developers is being grown into it. Um, they would be willing to do things like if you need, you know, money to hire a consultant to. Measure up what it is that we're doing, we'll write you out a check for that and. Some of you had suggested other, other things that you need in town. Do you need a new fire truck? So I, you know, I, I, I suppose the discount department store, um, at an upper end. Um, if the Ocean State still bothers me, if it's Target. We'll hear from Chris Hardy later. And I think we should pursue the, um. You know, the, uh, you know, life science research because that would include, um, a component, um, for. Um, um, you know, retail, you know, and restaurants. So it, it brings in some of the ideas that people have tossed around. So, you know, with that, uh, Chris, do you, are you, Chris Hardy, is he available now?
He's on, hold on a second. Go ahead, Chris. You have to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Chris.
How is everybody today?
We're all good, waiting on you.
All right, I need to share my screen. Uh, let's see how I do that. I.
Oh, hold on a second. Um, I need to change your horn. You'll have to unmute yourself again, Chris.
Okay.
And, and now, now, now in theory, you can share your screen.
All right, so basically I asked a question across three Facebook pages. What would the town of Acton like to have at Kelly's Corner? And we had the results from February two thousand twenty one. And of the three pages, there was about almost fifteen hundred. People that chose various different ideas or different. Uh, whether it was in Acton Parents, um, Acton Boxborough Community. Or the Acton Community Forum. Now, these, each page has a different demographic, I would say. Such as the Acton Boxborough School Community, that might have more. Students or young adults along with parents and community members. Acton Parents, of course, when it says there's more, it's more parent, parent oriented in the page. And the Acton Community Forum page, that I said, has a big slice of the all of Acton. That, that's very diverse. Um, page. So what I came up, so I, I'll show you the, the raw results in the subsequent pages. But these are, these are what I highlighted. And you can see here, Target. Whoops. Target is number, is at the very top and I'll get into percentages, but it was. It was a good forty percent of Acton Parents and the Acton Community Forum. And you can see here, we have the community center and the YMCA. But as the selectmen have talked about, that probably isn't the best option. Uh, there was some very good interest in mixed use, which is probably the number two item. Housing, retail and green space. Um, that, I would say that would be the number two. Some sort of food hall and marketplace. Now, that's an interesting one because. The, as, as of it, co-op, which is a, which is a farmer's market that's opening up. It would be an interesting location to have that. I just was about to sign up for the co-op as an owner. You can be a shareholder of it. But that would be an interesting per, um, group to go ahead and tap into, to start a conversation with. Um, I don't know who would want to do that. But that's an idea that I, that, that I thought of when I heard of food hall marketplace. And then there's the job lot, um, and entertainment centers some sort. But then there's a year-round farmer's market and say an artistic venue. That still would be commercial, but it would be. Um, I guess, and, and business entity that will. Rent out space in, as, as in a year-round market in artistic venues such as in Lowell. I believe they have them at the, uh. Um. One of the downtown, the river section, the fa- I forget, one of the. I forget, but in Lowell, there's like a, um, artistic venue in the farmer's market there. Uh. You know, that's, if you, you're, you can pretty much see what the, what everybody wants. These are the raw figures. You know, it's forty five, forty percent is Target. Um, and, you know, thirty, 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 thirty-eight percent was community center and YMCA. That's a big chunk for people to want. It seems to be, it's one or the other as far as parents are concerned. Um, in that target demographic. And also with the Acton Boxborough. It's forty percent right off the top with just a YMCA or sports facility. Something where. The community can gather, um, something for us to do besides shop. Um. You know, and there's other, there's other things like the food hall and marketplace. Uh, this would be the Ocean State Job Lot with a fast food chain. Uh, same thing with the community page of Acton. Forty percent roughly for Target, mixed use, community center. You know, the, the, I can share this with the board very easily. This, this slide, these slides, but this is the real. This is what people want. It, this is not hearsay. This is what people chose to, to do, to. What they, what they want here. And I think what's, I don't remember which select board member mentioned it, but. It's important, and we all know this, that what goes in this property. Well, which would bring in more people to visit Acton and spend more money and time in Acton. In other commercial, um, vet places, visit restaurants or whatever. So. I, I think just going ahead and. Let's just bring something in real quick is not the greatest idea. I know we've been waiting and waiting, but. I feel we have to pick, we have to find the right partner. Is that, that's the word. Find the right partner because that's a large piece of property in Acton. And very front-facing. Uh, that's my spiel.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Chris on his methodology or? Are we from? What? Are there any questions from, from board members to Chris?
Nope.
Chris? And thank you for, but it seemed like a, 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 it was, it seemed to be Target. Um, had a sizable chunk and then right, right behind it was the combination of. Uh, community center YMCA.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
David?
No, not, nothing. So I, I think we need to consider, I mean, I. So I I think we need to consider, I mean, I don't think we should have the town manager run out and in contact Target without a board vote. I think, uh, you know, one of the uh advantages to me of Open State uh Ocean State Job Lot is it's kind of a specialty draw. Um, Target would impact every business in Acton that's not a service and suck the business away and from every business in Acton that's not a service, including our grocery stores. Some of which that have been in town for many, many decades and are very small chains. Um, so I think we need to consider tha- that. You so, a- again, what, it was, and 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 also, well, I know, anyway, that I I'm, it's not obvious to me that we want Target instead of Ocean State Job Lot. I I think that we, it needs to involve a little bit more thought. Um, Chris, could you stop sharing your screen, please?
Yep.
So, uh, Jim?
Um, so, um, Chris did mention the uh Asebet Food Co-op. And I had actually mentioned that to John Manjari as well. And he reminded me that the Stop and Shop company, the current owners of the land are clear that they are not gonna sell this to a, to a grocery store. Um, because, I mean, they have their own little Stop and Shop down the street, they don't wanna create competition. I don't, I I it's clear to me that Ocean State Job Lot does not count as a grocery store. I don't know how they would feel about a Target, as David mentioned, they sell everything, including groceries. Uh, and they 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 might not even be uh able to buy the land uh from Stop and Shop if if they're perceived as a competitor.
Well, it's a, it's a fruit, um, with, you know, they didn't want it was another, you know, grocery store in there. Because you would have had Whole Foods in there already.
Well, Target, Target is a grocery store, so.
Target does a lot of things.
Yes. Target's everything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any other board questions before we open it up further? Okay, uh, who else would like to speak?
There's several hands up, can I start calling up people?
Please.
Uh, Freddie Osmond, please go ahead.
Well, hi. Um, I have various things to say and they're gonna come out not in order.
Okay.
Oh. I too enjoy Kmart and miss it. Um, in general, I hate having to think about our future based on like what Stop and Shop wants to sell to um, to other people. And I just want to have more control and I just would love if either the town bought it or a an investment group or, you know, if it was, I don't know how things like um bonding works or if they're, if we got a group of people together from Acton to invest in it and then resell it. Um, no, I know some people will say, oh, we, we said we could resell the Main Street property, but we had other things we wanted to build. Um, anyway, I I ju- I just hate losing the control and um over that location because it is different. Yes, there are open stores in other parts of town, but this is a very central location. Um, my vision for it has always been um pedestrian space. Think Quebec City, think Mashpee Commons, you know, where you have parking on the outside and you have people being able to walk down little lanes with stores and mixed-use housing and and stores, I've always thought. But I, what, I I, two more things I wanna mention. One is about um stores. I just would love to see an independent store if we have a store rather than a big chain. Um, another thing which we would have more control over if we had that control. Um, we just lost the West Concord five and ten. And there are things you can't get around here, you know, you now have to leave town to get sewing supplies. Um, some things you can get at Ace Hardware, some things you can go to Staples um, to get, but I keep having an image of a, a five and ten type thing, which Kmart was. Um, and I really can picture, now, let me be, have a fantasy for a minute. Someplace that doubles as vocational training center for youth or people with special needs. Um, where you have a, a community-owned store, which is serving needs but also serves the needs of people who um need a certain type of jobs. Uh, and I just wanna say one more thing about the the senior center question. When I was on the senior center study committee, um, and I think Dean, you were the chair of it. Um, back when I was a selectman. We looked at a place across from Roach Brothers that could have built for us to lease a senior center and I, my memory was ten million dollars over ten years. Um, we now are paying, and I don't know how much rent we're paying for the senior center in the southern part of town. And it would be so great in the future if we had a more central location for a senior center or a community center. And I just think this is such a valuable location. So I would be into trying to take control. Sorry to talk so long. Um, but I understand you're all wanting to just let the market do it. But the market always doesn't do the right thing for community. Thanks.
You know, we're not trying to let the the market do it, we're, we recognize it's a special parcel. Um, and people would like good things there.
Uh-huh.
But we have to operate in the, in the world that we're in. Or we could, you know, we could let the parcel, you know, eventually, eh, it seems that they're not S- Stop and Shop's in no great hurry to sell it, they eventually will sell it. Um, you know, we just wanna try to be out front and if we could come to some consensus um, what we might want there and approach somebody who might do what we want.
Mm-hmm.
But they have to make money too. So, um, up next?
Okay. Mike Majors, please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just have a few comments about the the Kmart site. There's my usual argument is I really think it would be in the town's best interest if they hired a like a landscape or a, a, excuse me, an urban planner that could really uh lay out that Kmart site that would also include the oil the oil service parcel along one eleven crossing the high school. Just to show, indicate, you know, what the potential could be, maybe two or three different scenarios that would have mixed use and maybe some um commercial space and retail, um, the the life science concept is, I think is very good. But if you had a professional uh architect come in and and just say, this is what uh could go there and this is, these are the space limitations. These are, this would conform with your current zoning bylaws, your uh planning standards where the, where the uh where the buildings would go up, you know, up against the road and the parking would be behind, which is the exact opposite of of what we have now. Uh, that would be a good thing. Uh, the problem with uh Ocean State Job Lot is it, it, that's just putting lipstick on the page. Uh, you know, they're, they would do minimal improvements. They probably wouldn't do anything to the exterior except maybe uh scrub the outside and put a new sign up. Uh, rip out the interior and put their standard fixtures up. And if you need a, you know, five-gallon jar of mayonnaise, that's where you go. Or some Chinese um-made table saws, you know, Ocean State Job Lot is your is your spot. But I I think it would be, if we do anything less than that, would be uh sort of a failure of of planning and imagination on our part. One other uh concept would be, that's a follow-up to, if you had a professional layout of that site potential, you know, that maybe the concept of something like a sale leaseback. We could build what we want there. We lease it back to, not necessarily a developer, but an investor. Uh, we, we put the money upfront, build what we want, sell it to the investor and then we lease it back from them. So, uh, you know, we would, our uh upfront capital would be returned to us. It would, it would just return that in the form of a, a yearly rent. Uh, so I think there's some, you know, there's some ways, you know, you can work around that. But really, I, that site is just too critical uh and too important to the town of Acton to leave it to chance. Um, I know it's not our site, but we can still influence what goes in there a a great deal. Um, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else?
Oh, yeah, there are a few more.
Sure.
Barry Rosen, please go ahead.
Hi, Jim. I'm sorry, Joe, are you speaking?
Um, go ahead.
Uh, I echo some of uh Mike Major's uh uh bullet points. Um, I think we have to keep in mind, uh, one of the complaints we've heard for a long time and we still are hearing the town is uh terrible traffic along the twenty-seven, the twenty-seven corridor. Uh, particularly rush hours, people complain about that. And they have complained a lot about the whole Kelly's Corner, which we are attempting to redesign and make into a walkable area. We have to consider what happens if you try to rip, if we, if a company like a, a Target is brought into that area. Uh, it's a mess department store with food, et cetera. Uh, that would draw a lot of people from probably in-town and out of the town of Acton. And very likely would increase traffic significantly on that twenty-seven corridor because that is the main drag into Acton right now. Assuming people also took four ninety-five, they'd probably be coming down one eleven to that area, which would probably increase the traffic. So we've gotta be careful and concerned about that. Now, Kmart, a lot of people thought was neat and one reason it was deep. It, while it had a lot of good stuff, use it as a five and ten type store, it really didn't create a lot of traffic. At least in my time living in Acton, it wasn't a high-volume traffic area. So it had the best of both worlds, which is why it probably went out of business. They just said, that's it, we're done, um, we don't have the turnover. So it went away. Uh, so we gotta consider that and and that was, I I think that would still be a big complaint. One thing just to keep in mind, not saying yes or no, but keep in mind, food establishments are, eh, other, other than insolent, food establishments are the largest consumers of water and largest creator of wastewater in our community, by far, many times over. It's, it's amazing the amount of wastewater and water that are consumed by food establishments. So just consider that in our design and layout of the, the, the new Kelly's Corner that we're creating. Done, my spiel, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Maya, please go ahead.
Oh, hello, this is Elizabeth Oshie, um, Kelly's Corner. Um, sorry, my daughter's name is still signed in on my Zoom. Um, uh, I just wanted to speak to the Facebook polls for a minute. Um, as you probably know, I live in Kelly's Corner and I have an interest in making what goes on in the Kmart parcel be useful for our community. Um, I don't have any easy solutions for that tonight. Um, but I just wanna urge you all to use caution in interpreting these Facebook polls. These aren't um professional surveys. A lot of people are on all three of the Facebook pages that Chris mentioned and they could have voted in each one of them. Um, I'm in all three of them and I didn't actually vote in any of them because I just assumed they were just Facebook banter. Um, and there was no context given about if these polls were actually gonna be presented to the board or or have any weight in what happens there. So I really just wanna give that context to all of you. I also don't think Facebook is a representative sample of Acton, certainly it skews younger and um who knows what the demographics of everybody beyond there is. So if you really wanna hear from the community about what what everyone wants there, I think there needs to be a real professional needs assessment done. Um, so I just wanted to say that and urge you not to put a whole lot of weight onto those polls. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary Maxwell, please go ahead.
Hi, um, there are two things I'd like to say. One is we're in a safe harbor right now for forty B. So we don't have to worry about, um, you know, many, many housing uh apartments going in there. At some point, maybe we won't be in a safe harbor. Uh, and if we let that parcel go for a long time, maybe the decision will be taken out of our hands because, you know, if if we don't have enough uh other housing in in town, we could lose it. Okay, the other thing, I was, I Googled Target and I came across a site that said Target was uh converting some of its stores to Kmart. And I thought, oh my God, that's wonderful. And then I read Father and it's in Australia. So it would be very nice if Target would convert to a Kmart and come to our Kelly's Corner lot.
Come home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jennifer Morvadi?
Hi, uh, thanks, thanks for giving me this opportunity. Um, John, you and I had emailed the other night about just bringing some ideas about the community center that I had.
From Indiana.
From Indiana, that's right. One of the most beautiful cities in the middle, middle of this country. Um, but, so, you know, I, since we just communicated on Friday night, you asked me to prepare a proposal. I don't have any.
No, no, what I asked you is how, i- is, you know, out, in 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 Indiana, in in your, how we live, how did they, how did they, who acquired the land, you know, how did they fund the acquisition? How did they build the pro- um, you know, build the center? And how do, how do the operation cost?
Okay, so I specifically, I can't speak to a lot of that. Um, but what I will say before we go further, could I give you a website to put in the chat so if if anyone wanted to look it up? So it's um www dot the commons columbus dot com. The commons columbus dot com. I don't know if I can put that in or if somebody else can.
Yeah, and people can't see the chat, but I'll, I'll try to set that up so people can see it.
Okay, all right. It's just an incredible building. Now, what I will say is that Columbus, Indiana is like the number fifth town for architecture in the country because they have a gigantic company, Cummins Engine Company, that has, that pays architectural fees to design every single building they have in their town. And they have an architectural tour that drives throughout town. So their architectural fees, I'm sure, built that, they they were all paid for by a local business. But what I will say, I I lived there from two thousand one to two thousand four. And I had two very young children at the time, age one and two. What drew me to that building is there was an indoor playground. And that brought every young parent into the building off the bat. Once you got in the building, you also could look around and see that there was lobby space that was actually used when speakers wanted to come to town. Um, they did have conference rooms and they had a large fu- um, function um, function area for larger-scale events. So, um, yeah, there it is, thank you. So what you're seeing on this screen is almost twenty years after I was there. It did not quite look like that twenty years ago, so a lot has changed. It was, it was a lot more dated-looking when I was there. Um, but it was just a wonderful community center and that's, that's what it was. And you could go there to use the indoor playground. It, when I looked further into what the building offers, there are conference rooms that can be used by non-for-profit organizations free of charge. There are also spaces like the lobby and a large function, a large gathering area that could bring in revenue. Um, in what I, when whatever groups wanted to come in, come and use that space. It would bring people to the town. Um, and I just think that that space where Kmart is, I can, I can vision, I can envision it there and I'm a dreamer. I can, I can vision, I can envision it there, and I'm a dreamer. And it was just, when I left Columbus, Indiana, it was, it was a special place to be. And my feeling was, if I could ever pick up that town, bring it to Massachusetts, it's, it's, it's such a wonderful town. And to take a little piece of that and put it right smack in the middle of Acton would be amazing. But I do think that, you know, the more I thought of it, like, what if investors could have conference rooms named after them? If, if large investors came in, and, and you'll see that in that website where there are conference rooms named after people, I'm assuming large investors. Um, you know, when, when you talk about funding, this is a huge town that does have a very large community feel to it. When, if you've ever participated in a casino night that helped fund Miracle League Field, if you've ever attended other functions to help support Acton Food Pantry, we are a community that cares. And I, I think that from events that bring the community together, it could make a difference. And then another thought I had is, I know that, you know, this past year, Big Bird signs have shown up all over town. And what if such a place could be called the Carol Spiny Center? And what if any of the fundraising efforts could be the Kindness Project? You know, I, I originally wrote something up about how much I care about this town because I grew up here. I graduated AB in nineteen eighty-eight. My mother, Ann Ridley, served on every public service board there was. I have not followed her footsteps in that regard, but I have chaired two elementary school auctions, and I've been involved with Project Graduation co-chairing for five years. So I personally know lots and lots of people who volunteer hours and hours of their time that you say, you know, how could we fund it? But I think we could, I think we could dream, and I think that there could be fundraising efforts made to make a community center in that area. So I just, I think it's too important of a space in this town to just say, let's bring in Ocean State Job Lot. And, you know, I, it's the same ideas that have been thrown around there year after year after year. We need a Target, we need a Target. No, we don't need a Target there. If anything, people dream about the large Target that exists in Lemonster. That wouldn't even fit there. It would be a little Target, the size of the one in Burlington, Mass, that people don't like. They go to bigger Targets. And I know that we've moved beyond the Target conversation anyways, just based on, you know, the Stop and Shop issue and traffic issue. Um, but I just, I, I know when members of this board were first talking, it sounded like a community center isn't feasible. But I think that if we think beyond just bringing in a simple fix, I think it is.
Thank you, Jennifer. Alyssa Nickel, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure. I want to go after that amazing speech. Um, I really, really, um, I'm impressed with all of the enthusiasm and dreaming and imagination that's been expressed. Um, I loved Fran's comments about being creative and having control. I love Mike's comments about bringing in an urban planner. Um, and I love Jen's comments about a community center and, um, how special that, that place is. Um, so I'm, I'm fully in, in support of all of that, you know, creative problem solving. Um, if we, we were to go that direction, I would, I would get on board. Um, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things in case we stick with the practical route. Um, a couple of comments have been made about competition and Target and Kmart um, that I would just like to correct. Um, like Jen just mentioned, those, those Targets are really too big for that site. So, um, what would happen there is a small profile Target. And I don't know if, um, I've never shopped at a small profile Target, but maybe those stores don't have food available, and Stop and Shop would not be in opposition to that. Also, um, I think Barry was talking about Kmart and traffic not being an issue. Um, and maybe that's why they went out of business. And it's my understanding that, that that Acton Kmart was one of the most successful Kmarts. And it was Sears issues that, um, led to its demise and not because they weren't, they weren't doing well as, as an individual location. Um, and I, and I still want to emphasize that a discount store is, is going to be meeting needs of a lot of people in town that need affordable shopping options. Um, and I'm also in support of the research facility, um, and a mix of retail and restaurant because I feel like, um, that would bring jobs to Acton, and it would also provide support for the other shops and restaurants that are in Kelly's Corner because those people would need a place to go for lunch. So maybe the, the next, um, little restaurant that goes into the, the site where, um, Johnny Rockets was, maybe they'll be able to stay in business because they have a lunchtime crowd there. Um, I, I do want to mention that I also feel like this is a really important space. Um, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm on board with the emphasis on, on how special it is and how it's the linchpin for the revitalization of Kelly's Corner. Because I thought the infrastructure, um, was really what was, what was behind the revitalization, making it a pedestrian-friendly space and fixing the traffic issues. Um, because really, you know, the gas station's not going to go. And, you know, if Waino Isano decides that they want to move to a bigger location, you know, who's going to come in and be able to afford to knock down the ugly Midas building and build something attractive? And is the, is it really, you know, realistic to expect the Verizon site to change or the, or the oil site to change? Um, it's really not currently all that attractive. It's certainly not unified. And I feel like if we spend so much time, um, worrying about the attractiveness of what goes on the Kmart parcel, um, it's, it's not really going to get us anywhere in terms of making that whole intersection unified and, and beautiful unless it's, you know, we're talking forty or fifty years from now. Um, but thank you all for continuing the discussion, and thank you to all the residents for all of their really good ideas and, and enthusiasm.
Thank you, Alyssa. Uh, Tara, please go ahead.
Hey, hi, Tara, can you hear me?
Sure.
Yeah, it's an exciting day, and I agree with everybody, especially Mike and Majors in these. We agree on that, that's going to be really powerful, and I'm really excited about that. Um, I have concerns about life science water use because remember up in, um, what's the place that we're giving free taxes to up on Agag? They're using all our water, a million gallons a day or something ridiculous like that. Anyway, let's be careful about that. Also, life science concerns of disposal of unregulated chemicals and bio-waste. Um, let's be very careful about that, gene, gene, and that ended up in our water, not like that. Uh, what's wrong with using the same building? Um, I just used a fifteen million dollar gold-plated community center. Um, if, if the existing building's good enough for Ocean State, it should be good enough for a community center, but we'll just set that aside because I'm not even sure we want to do a community center. But I do love the idea of an official, so all right. Uh, I love all the talk about retail, and I would rather the water get used by restaurants than a bio-waste lab. Um, I am only, I'm in favor of housing if it's affordable permanently to people who work in Kelly's Corner making minimum wage. I'm very excited about that idea. Small housing balanced by commercial, increasing commercial space somehow, uh, to balance out the tax situation. That's the thing that's interesting, that people who are in favor of Kelly's Corner infrastructure are now worried about traffic increases from development. Isn't that why you voted for extra turning lanes and stuff like that? But, uh, I'm very excited that we're collectively talking about this, and I'm going to be looking for that nice lady with the, uh, the Columbus, uh, project because I know some people that want to donate to their own conference room or something like that. But I, of course, wouldn't want it to be privileged, uh, but to be for the community to use. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tara. Going to the Tara conference room. Um, um, uh, Mike Majors would like to speak again.
Sure, of course.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, no, that was, uh, no, I'm done, sorry.
Okay, then, 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 uh, that, that's all, Josh.
Okay, so, um, any final thoughts, comments from board members?
David.
So, um, you know, I, I, I would be, you know, in addition to my remarks, or I, I would be o- open to what, um, Mike suggested or a variant of it, and to have the town hire a planner. Whereas I, I, I can't say that I, I think that we can, in, 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 you know, even if we do what Tara said and keep, keep the building and renovate it for, for some, uh, municipal use, um, I can't see us spending six million dollars and then multi-million dollars to, to renovate it. Um, but I think we can spend some, potentially spend some money to plan for it. And maybe the planning, um, uh, you know, uh, does attract whatever the, the plan shows, right? So it's kind of in, indirectly puts, you know, what's possible on paper or on PDF. And, um, uh, you know, and, and then we, we can, uh, uh, you know, try to attract whatever that, that plan shows. And it, you know, I'm wondering whether it might be worth, um, uh, having, um, uh, you know, asking town meeting, uh, for, um, some monies for a plan to do during the next fiscal year. Um, just an idea, uh, if, because I, I mentioned it now because if we are interested in doing that, we would have to discuss that to get it on the, on the warrant in the next couple of months.
Okay, now, Dean.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with having town staff, um, if the town manager feels it's appropriate to, you know, do some sketches or something like that, or if there's some minor amount of money that could be spent to, to come up with a vision that maybe could be used for marketing the property. But I don't think we should be spending a whole lot of money on a parcel which we don't own.
Yeah.
And, and that we have no intention whatsoever of buying from, that seems to be the consensus from the board right now. Um, you know, I, I think it's, it's in private hands. There's zoning that applies right now, that it's in compliance with. Uh, there has been attempts in the past to, uh, to change the zoning in that, in that area, and those didn't go anywhere, and that's a multi-year process. I think we should move ahead with, uh, you know, asking the town manager and, and the economic development director to go out and try to market this thing and, you know, beat the bushes and see if there's any interest. Call up Ocean State and some other places. Um, maybe get an answer as to whether, you know, Target is even viable. That probably would be, it sounds increasingly like it's not really a viable idea. But I just, the thing that I, that I can't get over as far as spending a lot of money here is, we don't own it, we're not going to own it. Um, and I think it's a misuse of, of tax revenue to spend a whole lot of time in there. Um, and money trying to imagine here or something. So if the, if the manager can come up with some, some ideas with, uh, that might spark some interest on a private developer or private, um, entity like Ocean State or some other place that wants to come in there, that's fine. But I, I just don't see that that's an appropriate use of tax money for a parcel that we don't own.
And Jim?
Yeah, where is Stop and Shop on this? Do they want us to market this property?
No, 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 um, you know, they're, they're just, they've listed it for sale in June of, of two thousand nineteen, and there was a local group that had an option to buy, and they sat on it for a year and then decided not to go forward. Um, and then, you know, why I'm saying let's sort of be proactive about it, taking account we don't own the property, um, i- is that it, you know, you, you, it just, the, the, the two concerns that, that I've been working with the last couple of years is you, you didn't want to see a developer coming in there and saying, I'm going to, uh, it's a, you, you're not a ten percent, I'm going to build two hundred apartments here. We've been able to stop that. And the other thing that we heard repeatedly from people is, you know, they did not want to see another box store in there or a discount store in there. That that was not the vision of the parcel that now, you know, we could be open-minded and say, well, maybe, you know, there's, people have changed their mind, and we have to look at that. Um, you know, what I, you know, so we could, um, you know, move ahead a little bit and maybe whittle down possible, um, ideas is ask John if he'd be in touch with Target and see if they have any interest in, in, in coming here. Not that, you know, we're, we're just, you know, we're, we're gauging interest and testing the waters. We're not, you know, saying come here, but, you know, are they interested? And if they're, if they say yeah, okay, that's something to think about. If they say no, that door is closed. What's the sense on that? Jim?
Um, I'm not sure, but I think if I was to say correctly, uh, that, uh, John, that you, uh, you have a sort of a more positive sense of Target as compared to Ocean State Job.
Yes, that's fair.
Some of us that have a more positive sense of Ocean State Job Lot rather than Target. Um, I, I don't know how, you know, whether it's a straw poll or something, but I, uh, I, I, I would be hesitant to go out and ask Target if, you know, if we might instead rather be asking Ocean State Job Lot, who apparently already have an interest in, in.
They do.
Houston. So that might be worth that extra discussion after we hear from, uh, the, uh, you, you mentioned a couple of other committees.
Yeah, two committees, EDC, Thursday, and the Steering, Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. So, you know, what we could do is just put this back on for the twenty-second, and we could have up, I'll provide updates, um, as to where those two groups are.
Mm-hmm. Do you have a way of articulating, John, what, what your thought is about comparing those two scores? Because I think all I heard was that it just sort of didn't, it didn't sort of sit with you right. And I, I didn't know what, quite what that meant.
Yeah, see, you know, from what I, you know, people had, had said to me, um, over the last couple of years, you know, you better watch it because, you know, an Ocean State Job Lot could come right in there. You know, they don't care what you think, and it's zoned for what they want to do. And all they have to do is clean up the store and put a new sign there. And that was, and, and I could have imagined if, if they did that, um, people would have said, how did you let that happen? You're our elected officials. How did you allow that to happen? Dean?
Okay. I think it's the answer to the question of how do you allow that to happen? We didn't allow that to happen. That was allowed by the fact that it's an existing building that's been there for over fifty years, and it complies with zoning. So I don't think we should make it about us allowing stuff to happen. We're not like the wonderful Oz. You know, we're not the wizard behind the curtain here. Town meeting decided what the zoning was going to be. Town meeting decided not to change the zoning. You've got an existing use in private hands. And, you know, if somebody says, how did you allow that to happen? That's the answer I give them to them. You know, this, this is not a centrally managed economy in this town. Uh, there's still free market. And if the free market thinks that it's a good idea, then, you know, let Ocean State or whoever wants to come in there, come in there. Um, I'm in rare agreement with Jim Snyder Graham on this. And also, um, you know, I take the point that David made about Ocean State might be more desirable as far as not competing with some of our existing stores and operations. Um, you know, we don't want to drive Roach Brothers and Donlins and Stop and Shop out of town um, if we bring in a Target that has a lot of groceries. And we don't want to end up with a, a store that's going to go directly against, uh, you know, Ace Hardware and places like that. So I think the nice thing about the Ocean State proposal is it's kind of a niche. Um, you know, I don't know if you've ever been in one, John. I mean, it's. You know, I don't know if you've ever been in one, John, I mean, it's not, most of the ones I go to aren't, aren't that great, as far as the aesthetics of it, but it fills a need, and people go there, and it's obvious from what the letters we've been getting from the members of the public, people right now in Acton are driving to Lemonster and Bedford to go to an Ocean State Job Lot. Now, last I saw, Bedford is not what I call a rundown town. You know, so I, I just, certainly, if you want to hear what EDC and Kelly's Corner has, Steering Committee has, say, that's fine, but I would remind you that the charge for the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, which I serve on, we're focused on the infrastructure. And we've made repeated assurances at town meeting, when we got all of this stuff approved, is that we're not going to muck around with the commercial uses in Kelly's Corner, we were focused on the infrastructure. So, Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, I would predict, would probably say, well, it'd be nicer if, if they got the nice spiffy lampposts we're talking about, and that sort of thing, and green space, but the charge for the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee had nothing to do with, with the marketing and with the commercial development there.
Well, they were also behind in two thousand sixteen, I, I wasn't involved in it, they were advancing the mixed-use zoning on the parcel, to change the zoning.
I mean, it failed.
You know, and it failed, but, but the charge went more than just the infrastructure project. I know when, when I would, you know, dealt, you know, took charge of the outreach for the, for the supplemental funding, we, we, we narrowed it down, it's just about the infrastructure, we're not talking about what's going on the Kmart parcel, but what, you know, everything you said about, you know, you know, zoning, here's why it happened, you know, that would fall flat in the court of public opinion, because there's been, you know, such buildup that, you know, it's a special parcel, we want something special there, you know, there's been a lot of groups visioning about what they would like there, and, you know, to see an Ocean State Job Lot, think, well, we could move in here and zone for us, and we don't really care what you think, you know, that would, you know, really set off a, you know, a lot of disappointment and frustration, you know, and it may come to something like that, but, you know, you know, not as a matter of, you know, I'm sorry, this is what we're going to do on this parcel, it's our parcel.
Well, I think you and I would differ on that. You know, the zoning changes failed, the, the two thousand sixteen attempt at, you know, tying in zoning changes and multi-use and, and all that failed. So I think, you know, we are where we are, town meeting made these decisions, and, you know, what I've been reading coming in on email as far as the court of public opinion is, that people don't seem to have the issues that you have with Ocean State or some other use like that.
No, I think what, what I take from the letters is, you know, there's some support for an Ocean State, there's, you know, there's support for a, for a discount department store, you know, with Target, you know, leading the, you know, you know, leading the list. They want something that they would consider good in there, that would appeal to a large segment. Okay, so why don't we do this, we're not reaching, I'm going to reach, and it's reasonable conclusion, I, I don't, I disagree with history you laid out, and, you know, the decisions that the town made, but, you know, what they did, but when faced with the reality of those decisions, they would say, how did this happen? And it's hard just to say, well, here's why it happened, and, well, that's not good enough, and, but why don't we just carry this over until the twenty-second, and I'll report back what the Steering Committee and EDC has to say about their thoughts on the, on the parcel, but I, I do agree with you, I, I don't see any need to start hiring, you know, visionary consultants about what may, you know, you know, go on there for a parcel we don't own, and we're not going to buy, and, you know, we're subject to what developers are, you know, going to want to do. A developer lawyer friend of mine, when I asked him about this two or three years ago, said to me, look, if a, if a developer went to his bank, is it her banker, and said, I have a plan for, you know, for twenty retail shops and restaurants on this six thousand square foot parcel, the banker's going to say, give me twenty signed leases. If the developer went in there and said, I have plans to, you know, put in two hundred rental apartments, oh, you could pick up your check on the way out, so, you know, that's the world we're dealing. So, okay, so if there's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn, and we'll, ready, Joe? Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Can I call the roll?
Please.
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Hi.
Ms. Gardner?
Hi.
Mr. Chairperson?
Hi.
Mr. Benson?
Hi.
And we're adjourned.